...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Starlager on January 3rd, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now on to special events applications?
Um, I don't think that's a special thing.
No, but just...
Yeah, yes, okay.
How did you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Take your time.
Yes.
Long day.
Good evening. First application before you is from Interfaith Neighbors to block the 100 block of Atkins Avenue for their grand opening event. Second application does not need to be considered. I just received confirmation this morning that the band will be playing in the band shell, so they won't need the use of Bradley Park in July and August. Next is the Asbury Park Summer Games, which is a weight and exercise competition or event in Bradley Park, followed by the Double Dutch Contest on July 1st, Cathedral International with their annual water baptism on July 23rd, Mind Travel Concert, Silent Concert on August 20th on the beach, CDI Summer Info Fair in Swinward Park on June 24th, Porcha Palooza, Porch Fest, Bon Street Block Party, the Asbury Park Fishing Club, Queston Use Fisherman's Lot, and we have a wedding on June 30th, I'm sorry, September 30th on Third Avenue Beach. And lastly, we have an application from Black Hand Cinema for to shoot a video on city property beach in Boardwalk on June the 6th. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Nothing from me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi. So I just wanted to let everyone know that the Bangs Avenue parking garage will open for the season this Friday, and the hours will be Friday, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And I also just want to let everyone know that the city of Asbury Park has newly upgraded to Spray Park, and it will open on June 5th. Hours will be noon to 7:00, weather permitting, seven days a week, and this is on Atkins Avenue. Free admission. Children must be supervised by an adult.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening. This season, our recreation department is doing an awesome job, and they're going to have so many programs for the summer. You have to sign up by June 22nd. And for just a sample of what's going to be available, there's a soccer program for grades 1 to 5, youth swimming lessons for, again, grades 1 through 6, adult swimming lessons for 18 years and older, a summer track program for K to 12, and a free Lake House Music Academy Hip-Hop Week for grades 6 to 12, and also summer surf free. And it's a one-week clinic from grades 2 to 6. And it's just going to be, so if you have an opportunity, here's a chance to participate in all types of events, both for youth and for adults. Thank you.
And thanks to Leisha Floyd for putting that together.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Sticking with Leisha Floyd and the Recreation Department, the, we're going to be doing the free beach badges for free access for families registered with Leisha. So that means after June 12th, if you are a family in Asbury Park who qualifies, you'll get a free pass to get on the beach. Applications aren't available until June 12th.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the City Manager.
Thanks, Lisa. I just wanted to reiterate thanks to Leisha for the great job she's doing, and also for any of our residents that are looking to participate in our summer rec programs and need financial assistance, it is available. So please contact Leisha if you're interested in a program and feel that you can't afford it. We can work with you to make sure everyone can attend.
Thank you. Matters from the City Attorney.
Nothing at this time.
Thanks, Fred. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There would be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Myra Campbell, Madison Avenue, Asbury Park. I'd like to show you something. I'll try to go through this part as quickly as possible. Imagine this with a phone number underneath it. No trespassing. I believe this is that one. That's one. Please count along with me. Right here, no parking. Both two, no parkings. There should be right here, no trespassing. Private property, keep out. Same thing. All of these signs, plus two city posters about the Easter Parade. All of this is on a half a lot. The dimensions of the lot are 31.12 feet by 64.50 feet. Makes no sense at all. Mayor Moore, you saw the signs. Councilwoman Clayton, you saw those signs. They are still there. I don't understand why. Johnny Max, his stuff eventually was taken down. Now, the sight of those signs, it's hideous, and is the number, and the number of the signs on 1407 Madison Avenue make no sense. So I don't know when you're going to address it or not. Let's see, the signs have been there, I said, three months or longer. It's evident that you probably are just going to let it stay there. And so I ask each and every one of you, would you want all of these signs in your front yard or in the property right next to you? Moving on, this past three years, I've requested that Habitat for Humanity allow me to turn a property, 1407, into a community garden. I've gotten various answers, but paramount, they all meant no. Habitat's for Humanity mission statement: Seeking to put God's love into action. Habitat for Humanity brings people together to build homes, communities, and hope, vision, and a world where everyone has a decent place to live. Habitat's executive director, Heather Schultz, has never asked me, not once, to sit down and talk about this community garden. I've spoken to Randy Bishop, Board of Directors at Habitat, our city manager, Mayor Moore, Councilwoman Clayton, all of whom felt it was a good idea to have a community garden, but no, no community garden. I haven't heard since. Now, go on to say this. On April 26th, I was at a city council meeting. Our city manager, Donna, approached me and informed me there would be probably an MOU signed between Habitat and the city. Oh, and that Councilwoman Clayton would run the program, is the Quality of Life Chair. And I ask you, if this has been my idea for three years, why is the city taking it over, and why hasn't the city done more about the other vacant lots in this city as far as turning them into community gardens? My response was, the community's empowerment is surely shown when you take my idea and allegedly give it to someone else. No one from the city has contacted me since April 26th. There's been a lack of transparency, a demeaning display of community improvement, examples of humiliation, and lack of cooperation. In a city undergoing gentrification, some in the community with low incomes would be helped by community garden. Think of all the growth this would mean to the children in the neighborhood. Planting, weeding, watering, watching the growth of the vegetables, and taking the food home so the family can eat it. What a missed opportunity to teach our children this cooperative initiative. Yeah, you can give a family a fish, they'll have dinner for one night, teach them to fish, and they'll have dinner after dinner. They'll be able to eat for always. Oh, and by the way, I have my own garden, so this is not for me. This is for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Myra, and I'm sure...
I have an update, Mayor.
Okay, let me just, I'm sure tomorrow, first thing, those two Easter Parade signs will be taken down because of the cities. I mean...
We weren't aware they were there.
Okay, can the city take those down tomorrow? The Easter Parade?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. And Myra, you're right. I talked to you, and I was so happy to call you and say, I talked to the city manager, and there's going to be an MOU. And then, the last meeting wasn't on, we were going through the agenda for this meeting. I asked Donna, I said, Donna, where's this MOU from Habitat? So now Donna will follow through with the answer.
So I am still waiting for the MOU from Habitat. I did reach out to Heather. She has been working on it. She hopes to have it by next week, so hopefully we'll have it for our next meeting for June 14th. The city, the MOU will be between the city and Habitat, so that's why the city will have to manage the program. The MOU is not between Myra and Habitat, so that's why the city has to manage the program. In order to have a community garden, there are other things involved, such as watering and things like that, so we'll have to provide a water truck. So that's why we can't have a community garden in every empty lot in the city. We just don't have the ability to provide water to all of these different spaces. So I'm hopeful by next meeting, we'll have the MOU for June 14th. And regarding the no parking and no trespassing signs, it was my understanding that you had asked Habitat to put them up many months ago because you were concerned about people parking on that lot. When you found out that our police could not enforce that is when, I believe, you asked for them to be taken down. I will ask Habitat again if they plan on taking them down, but I think they were put up at your request. Thank you.
Can I respond to that, or no?
I gave you 15 seconds.
I, everything you said, City Manager, be very respectful. Yes, I have complained about that. But to have seven signs, it's like everybody's going to, you can't read no trespassing.
So to be respectful, and we'll have this conversation, since the mayor said it was okay, I didn't put the signs up. Habitat did that at your request. If you want them down, you need to tell them. The city doesn't work for Habitat. We don't have control over them. But I will convey your message to Heather that you want the signs taken down.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I just want to just do, the Asbury Park Complete Streets has really gotten in touch with us to talk a little bit about the railroad crossings that are being proposed in Asbury Park by the NJDOT. And I understand there's one, they're planning on potentially closing the railroad crossing at Sixth Avenue, First Avenue, and Fifth Avenue. Nothing has been set in stone, but I just wanted to know the process of where it is right now, and if the city of Asbury Park has weighed in officially, whether they have supported those railroad crossings or not, and if you did, why, or why not? So that's my first question, so...
No, we'll keep, keep on going.
Well, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that we are looking for reporters, the Asbury Park reporter, so that was kind of, if anybody wants to participate in what we're doing, live streaming public meetings, or, and/or getting involved in writing articles and putting together stories, we do have some funding to hire people. So, not a lot, but a little, you know, so...
Okay, so as far as the railroad crossings, we don't have it now, but it was sent to Polly, the letter that we sent out to the Board of Education and all the residents. I don't know if she sent that to you. If you do, you have it. You see that we adamantly opposed it, and we're still against it. But final line is, we will have no say in it. The DOT and, I can't think of the name of the lady in charge.
Vanessa.
Well, no, who's the, Gudraz, the director for the state, has basically said, like, you know, it's our decision, we're going to do what we want to do. But all we know right now is Six Avenue is on the chopping block. This First and Fifth is a new one to us, where years ago, they said they wanted to close down Six. And, what, about four or five years ago, they closed down Summerfield, and, which was more key to, like, access to the West Side, and we got no public support saying no. But now there's one down at Sixth Avenue, we're getting some public support, which is appreciated, which we got that public support about Summerfield. So every public support's appreciated. I'm glad, like, you're starting a email campaign, but it's going to be their final decision, and we have no say over. And they, they're doing it, they did it at Allenhurst, they're doing it all over, and they're doing it for cost savings, and they're doing it for liability savings for accidents. And we're opposed to it. We're opposed to anyone's after that, but the only one we know about it right now is Six, and they've been telling us for the last two years they're going to do Six, and now we're being told, like, it's another year away? Possibly?
It changes quite frequently, Mayor.
Yeah, so they're tough people to deal with, and bottom line, they can do whatever they want to do, no matter what we say. But yes, we have opposed it, we still oppose it, and again, if you need a copy of that letter, we'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
To touch on that, the...
No, you got to go to the microphone and say your name and address.
My name's Kareem. I'm over at 300 Deal Lake, and then I have a business in Sunset Plaza.
Can you state your name again, sir?
Kareem Alhamasi.
Thank you.
And to touch on that, it's the email for public outreach is apcompletestreets@gmail.com to voice those concerns, because I'm concerned about that as well, being that I have a business in Sunset Plaza. And then the other thing I was here for is also in regards to that in Sunset Plaza, because of all the construction on Memorial Drive. I didn't know much about that. And then someone from construction came in last week, ahead of the construction starting, said it'll be blocked off in front of us Monday through Friday, just for a week, and we're going on two weeks now of not having parking there. It's just impacting my business, and it sucks that weather gets nicer, and leading up to Memorial Day weekend, it's just no traffic in that plaza, because it's just blocked off further and further out. And I've been living here for almost 10 years, and it was still hard to navigate to get to, so I imagine anyone going to that plaza is pretty hard to get to. Little easier now, but still, we're going on two weeks now of construction. So I just want to learn a little bit more of what's going on at Memorial, and how that affects the entire Memorial Drive this summer, because I think they're moving down the road the entire summer, if I understand correctly.
Correct. Okay, thank you very much for giving everybody the email address. And first time I'm hearing that you were told a week before that it was being closed down. It was supposed to be one week, and it's two weeks. So Donna, can you find out what's going on?
So it's open on that street now.
Do what?
It's open on, between Sunset and Fifth.
Right.
It's moved down to Fifth.
But, right, but the gentleman says he has a business there, and there's many businesses there.
Yeah, if you see pictures.
We all go to these businesses. We go to a lot of them. And to be told it's going to be closed one week, and it's closed two weeks, I'd be ticked off too. So what was the problem, and has it been corrected? And when's the next time this block's going to be closed off? Because it is all shops. Because after, right now, all they're doing is replacing the sewer.
Yeah, I've been watching it every day.
Right, so they're replacing the sewer, but then eventually they're going to come back and, like, mill the roads, take it all out, and then pave it, so I mean, I don't want that to be another two-week fiasco in the middle of summer either, so...
Exactly.
So can we get an update and find out what happened and what we're going to do in the future, especially for that one block?
Absolutely.
Can you give us how we can get in touch with you?
Just call the city manager's office.
I'm actually the one that called you earlier today, Mayor. And then you shot me a text back.
Did I?
Doesn't tell me something.
Yeah, so it wasn't, yeah, I don't text, so...
No, yeah, I don't, I don't call you much. Last year, I called you for See Here Now. Kathleen put me in touch with you.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so I'll get your information from the mayor, and we'll reach out to you tomorrow. I'll have our engineer reach out to you. Can you just send me his information, Mayor? I'll have Jay reach out.
Yeah, here, I'll give you my card.
You're one of the lucky ones who's gotten a text back.
I didn't text, I didn't, I didn't reply, so I don't know who replied.
Well, you got a text from someone.
Yeah, just give me a favor. When you get home, shoot me an email.
You get home?
Don't text, don't text.
We're in the middle of a meeting right now.
Sorry, I can't talk better than this.
No.
She called me, so...
I called you.
Okay, so yeah, that message I can do.
You're all for that.
That was because we were probably in this meeting, and so...
And you just hit a button, and it just sends that back, right?
Correct.
You don't actually take it.
We'll have our engineer call you tomorrow.
Yeah.
We'll have our engineer Jay give you a call tomorrow, once I get your number from the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Linda.
Good evening. My first thing I wanted to, I wanted to thank whoever did Fifth Avenue with finishing the paving. Was that the road department, or, I mean, they did it, but I just wanted to thank you, because it's so nice now. And I was calling it the fault line, because it was so many holes in a, in a straight line, you know, at the end of Fifth. So anyway, I wanted to thank everybody for that. And then the other thing is, still the same, the speeders. And my, I had an idea that they should put stop signs at each corner, four-way stop signs. So, so far, I haven't gotten anywhere with that. And then I thought, well, maybe they should put a couple more pedestrian signs around, where Pine Street is, and Langford, and Bridge is the worst one. And also, on Bridge Avenue, there's a lot of speeders coming in from the bridge. So I don't know what the answer is, but I'm really getting aggravated over the whole thing. I can't even, you know, worry if I cross the street with my dog, that somebody might come around the corner and crash right into me. So a lot of the people that live there agree with me, but I'm trying to get them to come to the meetings here, but I'm not doing too well. So anyway, isn't there something we can do to slow these people down? Because they just don't care. They really don't care that they're going fast. And how much time do I have? A minute? A minute yet. And they just don't care. And the other thing, oh, the other thing I wanted to talk about are the gardeners with the blowers. There were three blowers, people blowing on Pine and Fifth this afternoon, and they, they had it at top speed, and the dust and everything, all the things that cause cancer that are in the road are blowing all over the place. And, and then they, they go almost to the other side of the street, and they're blowing everything from the other side of the street towards Pine, I mean, towards, oh, you know what I mean. So I don't know why they, why do they have to, to put it up top speed? Can't there be some kind of an ordinance that you could pass that would calm it down a little? It's really annoying. So I don't know what the answer is.
Okay, thank you. And as far as Fifth Avenue being paved, because the water company only did half, that was the recommendation of the city engineer and Robert Bianchi, the director of DPW. So they recommended it. We found the money, and it was done, and you're right, it's much better.
Oh, good.
So I'm glad you bared with us until we could, like, and we also did the sidewalks around Sunset Avenue Park, and we did all the 800 blocks from, nice, from Sewell to Ma, to Sixth Avenue. So all the 800 blocks, you know, were paved also, between Main and Memorial, with money that we allocated for that. So, but Fifth Avenue needed to be, because they did one half and not the other.
Right.
And as far as speeding, you're right, it is a problem throughout town. Could we, let the chief know, maybe, can we get the speed trailers over there to see how bad it is, and there may be a little bit more enforcement? We'll try to get more enforcement on Fifth Avenue.
Yeah.
And Linda, in response to the leaf blowers, both the Green Team and the Quality of Life Commission are both looking at what other towns are doing as far as limiting hours to leaf blowers, and some towns are actually eliminating the gas blowers and opting in for electric. So these are all things that we're, we're talking about and looking at right now.
Oh, that's wonderful. You think that Asbury will do that?
I hope so.
There were a couple other things I wanted to say, but my time's up.
We'll see you in two weeks. It's always a pleasure seeing you.
Make a list.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Anybody else like to be heard? Motion, close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed. We are now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of the May 10th, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, said items should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2023-239 through 2023-242. Do I have a motion?
Hold on one second, please.
Separate 242, please. Will do. Okay. So, motion to approve consent for Resolutions 2023-239 through 2023-241.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn, who's left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2023-242, a resolution authorizing cleaning services to the existing AC system at the municipal building.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-243, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-244, resolution approving change order number one with Arcari and Iovino for the transportation renovations.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-245, a resolution authorizing payment for emergency sewer repairs needed at Langford and Monroe Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-246, a resolution authorizing replacement of windows at the boxing gym. Resolution 2023-246, a resolution authorizing replacement of windows at the boxing gym.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-247, a resolution authorizing the tinting of walkway skylights located on the second floor of the municipal building.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-248, supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city of Asbury Park in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,500,000 waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project in connection with a project being undertaken in the city by Kahehmanians Baltic at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC, and as a portion of nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 20, 2023, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-249, supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city of Asbury Park in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $200 million, sorry, $2 million waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project in connection with a project being undertaken in the city by Kahehmanians Aegean at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC, and as a portion of nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 20, 2013. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-250, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park declaring its official intent to reimburse expenditures for project costs from the proceeds of RAB bonds.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-251, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park making application to the local finance board seeking authorization for not to exceed $4,500,000 redevelopment area bonds to finance the construction installation of certain infrastructure improvements within a portion of the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area pursuant to NJSA 40A: 12A-29A3 and NJSSA 40A:28-67.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-252, a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between city of Asbury Park and the housing authority of the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-253, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into an estoppel and recognition agreement regarding the master developer agreement and the subsequent developer agreement at 1150 Kingsley Seniors Investors LP as the lender for AP Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC in connection with the development of property located at 4001 Lots 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, formerly known as Lots 2-15. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-254, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a recognition agreement regarding the financial agreement with 1150 Kingsley Senior Investors LP as the lender for AP Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC in connection with the development of property located at Block 4001, Lots 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03, formerly known as Lots 2-15. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-255, resolution authorizing lease agreement with Interfaith Neighbors, Inc., Kula Urban Farm Project concerning a vacant parcel of city-owned property located at 1219 Springwood Avenue, Block 1103, Lot 49.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-256, a resolution supporting community solar in the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-257, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to execute a replicable license agreement to permit a limited encroachment into the right-of-way area, including airspace, along a portion of Langford Street to benefit the property located at 929 Asbury Avenue, Block 403, Lot 11, Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have in addition to tonight's agenda, it's resolution 2023-258, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park expressing the intent of the city to utilize and or earmark remaining funds received through the American Rescue Plan.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now into ordinances for introduction. I have ordinance 2023-15, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 4-10 entitled Permits for Special Events of Chapter 4, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of June 14, 2023.
Move it.